Allen Morgan was elected as mayor for a full four-year term ending December 31st, 2026. Diane Balisca and Alex Kogan were elected to council for full three-year terms ending December 31st, 2025. Both to office.
You hit the chance.
Other side. No, it's the top. They should be frozen, doesn't it?
Just a quick comment. Some people ask you, "Why are you getting involved in politics?" You know, it's a tough sport, but you get to meet people like Al Morgan. And I'm very pleased with you. Raise your right hand and say, "I state your name." We'll try it again.
I, Allen Morgan.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
And I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
And I will true.
Bear true faith.
True faith, that'll be just the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
All the duties.
Of mayor.
Of mayor.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Mayor.
First off, I would be remiss if I didn't thank my wife profusely. All the nights, all the activities, everything that she puts up with. And she still has a lot of things on her mind. So, but it's great. I want to thank my family too. It was great inspiration to do what's right. Not what's popular, but do what's right for families in New Providence and all the constituents that we represent. So I want to thank you so much, everybody, and you know, all the people that helped me throughout the years. And John, Nancy, and Michelle, you know. I don't think people really understand how much and how well they represent us down at the State House. I have an easy job and you know, they kind of like coming to New Providence to, you handle 16 towns. So, but we are very fortunate to have you representing us. And then we have the newly appointed chairman here, Len Mortimer. Thank you for coming. For council president Bob Robinson's here. You know, just a lot of good people in this room. So I just want to thank you all and all of you that do the right thing and always support what not only me, but the council does and the administration. You know, it makes what this town is just a great place to live. Thank you. Well, see how we're very nicely quiet.
Me and Pico?
Yeah.
Mrs. Balisca?
She left.
On the other side? The left side. I just want to say what an honor it is to be here swearing in. And I want to congratulate Mayor Al, Councilman To Be, Alex, and Councilwoman Diane Ferrera, New Providence, is just so lucky to have you. Ready to go? I state your name.
I, Diane Balisca.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
A borough council member.
A borough council member.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I will repeat what Mayor Morgan said, but I just wanted to say thank you to my family, friends, residents, everybody who has believed in us and voted my running mates and I in. I'm excited to continue working for the borough and let's get to work. Good luck with you all. You all have a nice day. Happy to work. Wow, that's really cool. Who's going to hold it? I first have to find. You're going to hold it? Left hand on five, one raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Alex Kogan.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
The governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
And partially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
All the duties.
A borough council member.
A borough council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. So, first and foremost, the one person that really is playing for all of this is my next door neighbor, Keith Jarsna. Many years ago, when he and Matt and Tom whiskey were running for council, I was really not into politics. I just really loved this town. He asked if I could help with our campaign and today I stayed here. The one thing I just want to share with everyone, just what I learned during the whole campaign with Mayor Morgan and with Diane. We have such a gem here in this town. It's just a beautiful town. It's so community oriented. Everybody gives back from the fire, volunteer firefighters to our EMS, to our police department. It's just a pleasure to live here, to raise a family here. Both boys went through Robert's Middle School, High School. And we just truly love it here. So the least that I can do is give back a little bit of my background and talent in engineering to this council and to this town. Of course, there's like any family, there's always some bickering here and there, things need to improve, but at the end of the day, we're just so blessed to be a part of this community. And I look nothing but forward to help continue serving this community and to be part of this great organization. So, thank you all very much.
Oh, it's my turn? Okay, walk on please.
Here.
Mr. Jarsna?
Here.
Mrs. Joffrey?
Here.
Mr. Kogan?
Here.
Mrs. McKnight?
Here.
Mr. Balisca?
Present.
I'm here too. Okay, we're going to have the pledge of allegiance and please stand for the honor guard. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, face. Forward, march.
I'm going to say this in the mayor's message, but I just want everybody to know that this year, the New Providence Police Department got reaccredited for the sixth time. I think we were the third agency in the state to get certified, accredited, and we are only one out of two out of the whole state. There's 565 municipalities that have been recertified, only two for six times. That is a true test of their professionalism and their integrity, and I just wanted to publicly thank them. And Chief Hen, you have a lot to do with it. Okay, this is public media, Borough Council, Borough of New Providence, State of New Jersey. An adequate notice has been given in accordance with P L 1975, Chapter 231. That annual notice or revision was made in accordance with Section 13 of the Act. Okay, where we go on? Rob, please come up. Huh? I know. I just had to run. You're going to get your big time retirement. I said two to 12 years together. You know, I want to present this on behalf of not only the Borough Council, but the entire town. 12 years is a long time, buddy. And you know, we've gone through a lot of battles together, but I can tell you, when the push comes to shove, I can always rely on the advice of Rob. You know, he always says, "Mr. State, nothing seems to bother you." I can be going off and you're going, "It's all good, all good." So, I just want to say thank you. You've made a difference, and I think that's what we all try and do in life. Just make a little bit of difference, and you have. So, I'm going to present that to you and wish you to resent the children, you know, all the luck in the world and I'm going to miss you, buddy. I'm going to miss you.
Sure, by all means.
Great. So, Rob, when we met, our daughters were in the same first grade class together, and that was over 15 years ago. It's amazing to think that of those 15 years that we've known each other, you've served on council for 12 of them. In council years, that's like 120. You've served the residents of New Providence honorably and admirably for all those years. The list of accomplishments is far too long to mention each of them. You've added tremendous value from negotiating fair contracts and compensation for borough employees, helping hiring some of our key employees, helping managing our budget to ensure that our financial position is strong and we maintain our AAA rating, to improving our parks and our fields to ensure our residents have a best-in-class recreation experience. The positive impact that you made is immeasurable. I may have mentioned this before, but I'm here because of Councilman Munoz. He said to me one day, "I think you'd be a good council person. You should do it." And after many lies about the actual amount of time being on council takes, I decided to run. But actually, what he did say was, "You get out of council what you put into it." Well, you have certainly put in your time and the results speak for themselves. I personally would like to thank you, Teresa, and your children, who have shared your time with us. Most people might not know, but Rob also gave a lot of his time to the Boy Scouts. So I thought this quote would be appropriate for today. Sir Robert Baden Powell, who was the founder of the Boy Scouts, he told the scouts in one of his last messages, quote, "Try to leave this world a little better than you found it." You have most certainly done that for the Borough of New Providence for the last 12 years. I'm proud to be your friend, and I'm excited for you. You will now get to spend more time with your family. I really hope that they feel the same. You will always be a friend, and I'm sure I'll see you around. They're different than I have before, but I will miss working with you. I want to thank you for everything and I wish you nothing but the best for you and your family.
Councilman Munoz, I have tremendous respect for 12 years of service as a councilman and many years of service before that, and so many other ways to this community. The time and effort and the commitment is astounding. At a moment like this, I think one searches for the words to capture the admiration and respect that you have for someone's achievement. I'll be brief. You look for words that are precise and elegant to capture someone's true essence. For me, when I think of you, what quickly comes to mind intellectually, you're a reservoir of knowledge, both professionally, as well as the knowledge you've amassed during your tenure here on council. From a personal standpoint, no matter what the circumstance, you've been a steady hand, as was mentioned by the mayor, sensible, reliable. Rob, our community is fortunate for your service. You've served us well. You've made a difference. Thank you.
Rob, 12 years on council. All we really need to do is look to see where our town was 12 years ago and see how it's changed, to see what part you've played in that. Because you've had your hand in on every improvement that's been in this town, be it the liquor licenses in town, to our outstanding fields and facilities for our kids, to state-of-art equipment and facilities for all of our first responders, our fire, our police, our EMS. From the prudent conservative budgets, both operating and capital, that have helped us keep our AAA bond rating. And also with that capital budget, making sure like our infrastructure stays as great as it is, our roads, our sidewalks, our equipment for DPW, all that stuff is so important. And through all that, you've been involved with that. But probably, like the mayor said, your biggest contribution was just being yourself, being our calm, strong, and steady leader on council. Bringing your legal advice, bringing your voice of reason, your analytical thought and contribution to every decision that we made. So I want to thank you for your mentorship. I want to thank you for your leadership, and most of all, I want to thank you for your friendship. We'll continue the job that you started, but we know that you'll always be a friend to us, a friend to me, a friend to my family. And I appreciate everything that you've done for me and for our borough. So thank you so much.
I was just going to say ditto, 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 but not appropriate at this time. No lawyer jokes, no Boston jokes, but knowing you, just like the rest of the council here for many, many years, you're just, this is a really big seat to fill, and I hope I do half the job as well as you did. You've been a remarkable friend, very great advice on anything that I've ever taken on. I wish you nothing but success and thank you for your service.
Rob, so, you know, these guys said it beautifully, right? You've done just so much for our town. You've shaped it to be the way it is today. I could go into all the different projects, but I'm just going to talk about you a little bit and what I've known of you and being my right-hand man here. I'm going to terribly miss having you sitting next to me. You know, so thankful that for the past two years that I've been on council, you were right here, right next to me. As a newly elected councilwoman, it gave me comfort knowing that you are most senior council member was right here. You, over these past two years, you've become a mentor, you've become a friend, and your wisdom, your knowledge, but more importantly, your very chill personality was just such a great asset to me, but you know, to the rest of the council as well. You know, you can explain things in such an easy and concise way so that it's understandable and you know, just kind of brings it down a little bit and just makes it easy. You have a way of cutting through the thick and getting right to the meat of the problem, you know, without the drama and the stress. Oh my gosh. So you don't get ruffled, which is awesome, and I really appreciated that. I definitely will miss you sitting next to me. But I know that this is well-deserved, so happy retirement. Enjoy your downtime. I know you'll be playing some golf, spending some time with your beautiful family, but don't go too far because we still have some. So we still have some stuff to do.
Well, apparently my MO today is not to repeat what everybody else has already said, so ditto, ditto, ditto. I actually was going to talk about Boy Scouts and Troop 63 because that's my wheelhouse of knowing you and the impact that you've had not only on our town, but on the youth of our town through that organization is immeasurable. My two sons are here. I'm sure they could tell you stories about Mr. Munoz and all good ones. So thank you, thank you for all the impact that you've given to the youth of our town in that organization and many other organizations. Ditto on the calm ability and I don't know about you guys, but I still have his phone number, so I will be calling. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you. Thank you for my wife and my kids. You know, it was a quick nap in my head the other night. And I figure on average, I'm probably away four nights a month on council business, whether it be council meetings or the meeting meetings. So hopefully over a year, that's around 48 evenings I'm away from home. But over the course of 12 years, that's about 576 nights that I spent away from my family. So I'm indebted to you and I thank you for allowing me to do this. So to people of New Providence, I say thank you. Thank you for your support over the past four years. It's been a lot of fun. We've had a lot of fun in this room with even Dr. Robinson and Jim Madden and all the presentations you gave here. So again, thank you. Thank you very much.
I've actually learned three things real quick. I've learned three things. I learned Rob's math skills are actually better than we thought. I've learned that if I'm ever in a plane crash, I want Rob sitting next to me. And I want Lisa to do my next performance review at work. That was fantastic. Well done.
We had a few more guests. Councilman Jim Madden's here and Councilman Bill Schmeltz here, and we're deeply honored to have Governor Don DeFrancesco came in. Thank you, Governor. Every year I say I'm going to keep this mayor message short, and there's no way possible you could possibly do that. So, let me get a nice big drink of water before I start. New Providence is rock solid and doing great. Despite all the many challenges faced this year, including imposed state and federal mandates, supply chain issues, and record inflation, we have maintained our AAA bond rating, our borough finances are rock solid, and we have achieved a record number of accomplishments this year. We, this would not have been possible without our incredible team, most notably our dedicated borough council members. Thank you. Our new CFO, Jim Testa, and our finance committee. Our incredible borough administrator, Bernadette Cacaro, and borough clerk, Randy Barry, and all the staff, boards, committees, and volunteers. We are a rock solid team here in New Providence. Our CFO, Jim Testa, and our team has been on top of all our fiscal matters, keeping us on track and living within our means. Even though many predict tough times ahead, with our stellar five-year forecasting plan and meticulous budgeting, we are confident in our continued sound, stable financial footing. Public safety is our first and most important priority. Our volunteer fire and rescue squad, putting countless hours, and I mean countless, not only responding to emergency situations, but also continually training and maintaining equipment to serve our residents 24/7. They are all to be commended and thanked for their selfless service to our community. And they're always looking for more volunteers, so if you're ready and able to serve, we need you. You know, I go off script a little here, but I see the rescue squad, the fire department, every single event we have. You're at the schools, you're at the nursery schools, teaching kids safety, how to do first aid. You guys are incredible. Thank you so much. We bid our beloved Chief Teresa Gazaway Farrell on her retirement this year. And we thank her for her many years of dedicated loyal service to our community and wish her well in her future endeavors. We welcome with open arms Chief Dan Hen, who hit the ground running. You didn't miss a step, Dan. And we are very proud of our police department, who has recently reaccredited for the sixth time. We are only one of two police departments in the entire state out of 565 municipalities that have earned this distinction and honor. This speaks volumes about the professionalism and integrity of our police department, and we thank them for all the good service they provide in New Providence. Last year, we placed the highest priority on traffic and pedestrian safety. Our traffic bureau coordinator, Sergeant Diamond, and our traffic bureau worked tirelessly on plans, met residents, held listening sessions, completed traffic studies, and began implementation of short-term projects. and began implementation of short-term projects, including installation of new rapid flashers at Alkam and Spring and at South Marion, intersection improvements at Central and Valentine, and the new rapid flashers are coming in very soon. Replacing schools on speed limit signage at Sawbrook, installing speed tables at Magnolia and Fairview, traffic pattern changes at the high school and middle school, upgrading pedestrian flashers throughout the borough and reducing speed limits on heavily traveled roads. On January tenth, we're gonna have a townwide traffic and safety reevaluation meeting to go over what has been done and what projects we're looking to do in the near future and target our long-term plans. Thank you to the New Providence Traffic Bureau for their hard work and everybody who participated, contributed and helped on this project. And we look forward to even a safer Providence in two thousand and twenty-three. And it's not only the traffic bureau, it's the whole department. DPW helps, the engineers, it's a, it's a team effort. Our building department has been working diligently with our planners, engineers, code officials to amend, upgrade and change many of our ordinances to meet state codes. Most notably amending ordinance two twenty-five, which now requires milling and paving of the entire pavement surface edge to edge, curb to curb, and the full length of the excavated trench where more than twenty percent exists. This stops us from having patches all over, okay? Chief Lynch, Director of Building Department, along with the planning board and the council, have done an outstanding job codifying our zoning ordinance throughout the borough. We thank them for their hard work on that. And I see Margaret Koots is here and I know she is a big part of that. The hard work of this. And we also installed three brand-new pedestrian bridges at Douglas Street, Me Lane and the Longway Commerce Street. And we all know about the supply chain issue there. We thank the DPW for maintaining our forty-two miles of borough roadway. This year, they also milled and paved twelve roads in New Providence and made improvements to the wastewater treatment plant. DPW is always out and about doing numerous projects in, in all our facilities. They're also hard at work no matter what the element is, the crisis, extreme weather. We also thank our residents for their patience and understanding for the incredible infrastructure work and improvements that continue throughout the borough. DPW, Ralph, you guys are out there either hanging banners, putting them up, taking them out, picking up leaves, snow plowing, they're always doing something. So just want to thank the, the people at DPW. We are working hard on Borough Communications this year too. We've, we were finally, long last, able to contract for a new borough website to help us make borough information and communication and forms and documents more readily and easily available and to help improve user friendness. We are continually working to improve our public information communications to help keep everyone as up-to-date and, and correct and current information as, as, as soon as possible. Thank you to our Borough Communications team for the hard work. A chat with the mayor, which I've been doing for years, will continue on the first Fridays of every month at Borough Hall between six-thirty and eight. And as always, residents can call Borough Hall anytime and make an appointment to meet me or you can talk to me directly. We are here to serve. Our Community Activities Department, directed by Alyssa Smith, has had an incredible year. There was an increase of enrollment across all youth, adult and senior recreation programs. And they worked with other community groups to plan, promote and to run events, which were highly attended and enjoyed by all. Special projects this year included the long-awaited reopening of the De Corso Center, a new gazebo which they're putting up in Veterans Park. The frame went up today. Let's see, where was it? And the creation of a yoga dance studio on the lower level of Municipal Center. And we are continually doing upgrades on our parks and playgrounds. And I see minutes here and we were doing a cricket pitch at Warner Field, which we're very excited about. They're even gonna have a women's theme this year, so that should be fun. And the Community Activities Department strives to offer safe and affordable programs for all our residents. Each year, they provide classes, camps, special events, while always looking for safely recreate, have and engage in the community. We thank them for their dedicated good work. One of the many reasons New Providence is so successful and functions so well is because we all work together as a family. Every borough department helps each other. All this would not be possible without our fabulous borough administrator, Bernadette Cacaro, who pulls everything together, everyone together. She plans weekly department, department head meetings to keep all departments informed and in sync with each other and is continually looking for and implementing improvements to serve our community better. Our experience and dedicated employees are just incredible. Work well together and are continually making challenging situations flow and work more easily. We are truly blessed and grateful to have such an incredible staff and we thank them. Our dedicated diligent Borough Council works tirelessly, supporting all projects and initiatives and community activities, always putting New Providence first. Our Borough Council always takes a long-term, common sense approach with due diligence to every task and activities in our community. And we, we take every task and situation that arises and we never act impulsively. This speaks volumes to our stability, wise decisions and our ability to accomplish so much in our community. We all work incredibly well together. And that doesn't mean that we don't differences, but at the end of the day, we talk things out and most importantly, we respect each other. We are a great team focused on our community. I am personally so incredibly thankful for each and every one of you. Mayor and council are holy as good as the good and effective as the people around us. And here in Providence, we have the best. That being said, we wholeheartedly thank Councilman Rob Munoz for his many years of dedicated and loyal good service to our community. Councilman Munoz has served in many capacities, most notably as councilman for twelve years. His knowledge, experience and advice have been about, and he will be viscerally missed. We thank him and his family and wish him well in his future endeavors and that he has truly made a difference in our community. And we, we also congratulate Councilwoman Diane Belisca on her former election of Borough Council. She's an invaluable member of the team. And we also welcome newly elected Councilman Alex Kogan, who brings an extensive expertise to the table. New Providence is so fortunate for this incredible team. We are so grateful for our generous business community and that various committees and organizations, the Board of Education, and especially the hard work of our volunteers. Volunteers are the fabric of small-town living and the backbone of our community. Our generous donors and dedicated volunteers who continually give selflessly of their time, talent and expertise and support, often thanklessly, we cannot provide what we do. Thank you so much. Great communities are built and maintained on good governance and hometown pride and the spirit that forces volunteerism and generates tremendous community support and contributions. That is what we have built together in New Providence. It is one of the many reasons why our community is so rock solid. Thank you for all your continued commitment to make a New Providence the wonderful place that it is. We are pioneers strong. Thank you for allowing me the great honor to continue to serve as mayor of our great community. Over the past years, together, we, we have been stoked for New Providence. We have made great strides and accomplished so many things together. We are growing and evolving community with a proud tradition of excellence and it has been my distinct honor and privilege to serve, uphold and represent. Thank you for your continued faith in me and this council and for the continued support. Thank you to my wife, my family, friends, neighbors and to all the families and to all the friends who serve. This is a team effort and without your support, patience and sacrifice, we would not be able to serve our community in the capacity that we do. So on behalf of all of us here, we say thank you and may God bless New Providence and God bless all of you. Happy New Year. Thank you. Okay. Now we have the installation of the New Providence Hose Company. I say again. This only swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey that I will bear truth, faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States under the state under the authority of the people and that I will faithfully partially and justly perform all the duties of fire department officer, post company officer of fire department officer Congratulations. And can we have the rescue squad officers come up? I was scrolling through my Instagram today and I would see that you want to make a board for hour's serve. It was a thousand, twenty or whatever.
That's just writing, that's just writing hours.
Right. Just writing hours, just three, thousands, over a thousand hours. Chris looks and then the rescue put in a ton too and I'm like, pretty fun at that. First people tell me that too. Can you raise your right hand? You have to be honest with me. This only swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and I will bear truth faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in this, in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people and that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties and rescue squad officer according to the best of my ability thank you so much. Oh, we have presentations now.
Do you want to just call them up?
Yeah, you want to be doing for me? So we're gonna do, uh, use the service awards. We haven't done this in a while because of COVID. So I'll read the names. Who's ahead of me?
If you call them up.
Okay. And I call your name just come up. This is for you, twenty twenty-one. Five years, Brian Flynn. Ten years, Mike Sworzo. Fifteen years, Antonio Metana. Twenty years, Ralph Barbiano, Nancy Costo. I know you're here though. Thirty years, McCree Carrion, Mike Lee. For twenty twenty-two, five years, William Daniels, Michelle Feliz, Mike Key. Ten years, Bernadette Cacaro. Margaret Koots, she's here. Robert Vito, Dave Washley. Fifteen years, Karen Lambert. Twenty years, Sean Belt, Chris Garrison, Keith Lynch, Chad Wilson. Forty years. Wayne Byron. Twenty twenty-three, five years, Christian Siligoz, Marilyn Hurtas, Andrew Lynch, Michael Mitzner, Jesse Parisi, Michelle Zach. Ten years, David Rodriguez. Fifteen years, Arlene Reed. I saw her. Twenty years, Steve Brown, Jim Barbiano, Donna Sarna, Don Stratenovic. And twenty-five years, Jason LaBaska. Thank you all for your years of service. I'm reading some of these names. I can't believe people have been here that long. Okay. I'm going to announce the following appointments. Denise Pankowski, Deputy Borough Clerk, Wendy Barry, Equal Opportunity, Equal Employment Opportunity Coordinator. Wendy Affirmative Action Public Agency Complaint Officers. Keith Lynch, Municipal Housing Liaison. Margaret Koots, Affordable Housing Margaret Coons, affordable housing administrative agent. Ralph Papiano, recycling coordinator. Dan Hen, emergency management coordinator. Sue D Louise, deputy emergency management coordinator. Joe Papiano, second deputy management coordinator. Keith Lynch, property maintenance officer. Keith Lynch, alternate electrical subcode official. Ed Nasto, fire official. Andrew Sonnet, uh, fire inspector. Marie Rafay, uh, uh, borough engineer. County engineering design and, uh, as the land surveyor. Ogie Sartor, public defender. Michael Minster, municipal prosecutor. Dr. Richard Nelson, borough physician. Dr. Paul Corneal, uh, police physician. Uh, Paul Rizzo, uh, borough attorney. Paul Rizzo, substitute municipal prosecutor. Martin Allen, uh, tax attorney. Fred Dancer, uh, labor attorney. Matt Jessup, uh, municipal bond counsel. And Matt Jessup, uh, redevelopment council. Uh, NW Financial, um, redevelopment financial planner. McKinley Merz, uh, municipal planner. Will, what's his, Will Cutt, and company municipal auditors. And tender realty resources, uh, their property appraisers. Uh, Richard Knowles, risk managers. And OneSource EAP Employee Assistant Provider. Okay. I need, Matt, I need you to do, uh, one through four, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2023-032 is a resolution appointing Class Two Special Law Enforcement Officers for the Borough of New Providence, County of Union, and State of New Jersey for the year 2023. Resolution 2023-033 is a resolution appointing Class Three Special Law Enforcement Officers for the Borough of New Providence, County of Union, and State of New Jersey for the fiscal year 2023. Resolution 2023-034 is a resolution appointing school crossing guards for the Borough of New Providence, County of Union, and State of New Jersey for the year 2023. And resolution 2023-035 is a resolution setting interest rate on delinquent taxes at eight percent on the first fifteen hundred dollars and eighteen percent over fifteen hundred dollars, and establishing a ten-day grace period for the year 2023.
Okay, um, Lisa, by the way.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, resolution 2023-036 is a resolution authorizing the cancellation of tax overpayments or delinquent amounts less than ten dollars for the year 2023. Resolution 2023-037, resolution authorizing the cancellation of permit overpayments for amounts less than ten dollars for the year 2023. Resolution 2023-038 is a resolution granting authorization to hold an annual tax sale for the year 2023. And resolution 2023-039 is a resolution authorizing depositories for the funds of the Borough of New Providence, County of Union, and State of New Jersey for the year 2023.
Okay, Pete, Matthew Twelve, please.
Resolution 2023-040 is a resolution authorizing the treasurer to invest idle funds for the year 2023. Resolution 2023-041, resolution approving cash management plan and financial management plan for the Borough of New Providence, County of Union, and State of New Jersey for the year 2023. Resolution 2023-042 is a resolution authorizing signatories to the bank accounts of the Borough of New Providence for the purpose of authorizing the withdrawal of said funds for the year 2023. And finally, resolution 2023-043 is a resolution authorizing the borough personnel to sign payroll checks and designating the officials authorized to do so in their absences for the year 2023.
Okay, Diane, fifteen through sixty, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2023-044 is a temporary budget resolution. Resolution 2023-045 is a resolution authorizing payment of the bill's payable absent council authorization for the year 2023. Resolution 2023-046 is a resolution authorizing contracts with certain approved state contract vendors for contracting units pursuant to NJSA forty A eleven dash twelve A for the year 2023. And finally, resolution 2023-047 is a resolution authorizing contracts with certain approved county, state, and national cooperative purchasing contract vendors for contracting units for the year 2023.
Ken and Dean, seventeen through twenty, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 2023-048 is a resolution authorizing treasurer to reestablish petty cash fund for the Borough of New Providence for the year 2023. Resolution 2023-049 is a resolution designating certain newspapers as official publications for the Borough of New Providence, County of Union, and State of New Jersey for the year 2023. Resolution 2023-050 is a resolution fixing the time of meetings of the mayor and council of the Borough of New Providence for the year 2023. And resolution 2023-051 is a resolution approving holiday schedule for New Providence Municipal Offices for the year 2023.
Okay, Alex.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, resolution 2023-052. Resolution of the Borough Council of the Borough of New Providence Adopting Rules and Order of Business of the Borough Council for the year 2023. Resolution 2023-053. Resolution of the Borough Council of the Borough of New Jersey, County of Union, State of New Jersey Adopting Standard Operating Procedures for the Borough of New Providence for the year 2023. Resolution 2023-054. Resolution of Adopting Advisory Committees of the Borough Council for the year 2023.
Okay. That's the following appointments. Uh, Robert Sartorius, Class Four Member, Planning Board. Uh, William Hopeflin, Class Two Member of the Planning Board. Mark Jarmansky, Second Alternate Planning Board. Uh, Dr. Paul, Paul Corneal, uh, Board of Health. Pat Zaboni, Board of Health. And Bob Robinson, uh, alternate member of the Board of Health. Okay, these are your concurrence to council. Jeff Grove, Board of Adjustment. Uh, Bill Silochin, Board of Adjustment. Allison Gangliogo, uh, the Board of Adjustment for an expired four-year term. Mark Andrus, uh, Library Board of Trustees. Lisa McKnight, my representative to the library. Uh, John Kane, Planning Board, member to the Downtown Improvement District. Humbert Powell, resident member of the Downtown Improvement District. Councilwoman Belisca, governing body member to the Downtown Improvement Board. Matt Kaminsky, council member, representative to the, uh, New Providence Business and Professional Association. Bernard Decataro is a municipal liaison to the New Providence BPA. And Dan Hen, uh, member of the Shared Dispatch Board for two thousand twenty-three. Members of the Board of Ethics for, uh... Do I do these? Yeah, I guess I do. Uh, for the Board of Ethics, uh, Councilmen, uh, DeSarno, McKnight, and Kogan. Public Safety Committee, uh, myself, Matt Kaminsky, Nadine Jeffroy. Members of the Community Block, uh, Block Grant Committee. Allison Smith, Keith Lynch, Michelle Zach, Arlene Regan. Uh, member to the Union County Transportation Advisory Board, Andre Lupoff. Members of the Emergency Management Team. Jennifer Aranda, Megan Avalon, Dr. Paul, Paul Corneal, Bernard Decataro, Sue D Louise, Mitch Erickson, Huey Hayman, Bill Hopeflin, Mike Peano, Joe Papiano, Ralph, Ralph Papiano, Cindy Reese, Jay Richter, uh, Dr. Bob Robinson, Jessica Short, and Diane Wolf. Alan Morgan and Vincent Wyko. Members of the Municipal Alliance, Harrison Clewell, Mike, I, 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 Lavelle, Lizley, uh, James Madden, Debbie Merrick, Deborah Mooney's, Joe Narsissow, Ralph Parmigiani, Joe Pergalo, uh, Tyler Smith, Melissa Tassie. Liaisons are Dave Changio, New Providence High School, Allison Smith, uh, the cab, Mike Carlino, Police, Becca Caneglio, Board of Ed, Nadine Jeffroy, Council, Lisa McKnight, Council, and Hayden LaRoe Green, Student Rep. Okay? I guess we just need to consent agenda. I think the, uh... Seventy-one, did you? Thank you. Items, uh, one through seventy-one, motion, please?
So moved.
Roll call, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Aye.
Okay, at this time, I need a nominations for council president.
Mayor Morgan, I'd like to nominate for council president, Councilman Matt Kaminsky. An individual with a record of service to our community. A demonstrated high intellectual capacity and strong intellectual curiosity. A man with integrity and compassion. A good listener, open to new ideas, and a love for the communities. For these reasons, I am proud to nominate Councilman Matt Kaminsky as our next council president.
Have a second?
Second.
Hold the paper.
Yes, yes.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, um...
Should I do the committees first?
Yes, you do.
Before I start, I'd just like to, I'd like to start saying thank you to all of you uh, for your trust and your confidence. Uh, I'm truly humbled and honored. Uh, I especially like to thank Councilwoman Jeffroy for her leadership, and I hope to live up to the high standard that you set. Uh, this is going into my fifth year now on council, and I'm excited for the year ahead. Uh, I'd like to congratulate Mayor Morgan, Councilwoman Belisca, and Councilman Kogan on winning your elections. You know, when I look across the dais, I'm amazed at the level of hardworking, talented, and experienced people that we have here. This is really a great train, really a great team who truly wants what's best for New Providence, and I'm really proud to be a part of it. Uh, one of the biggest things I've learned over the years is that the work is never done. Every year, we take on new challenges. We have to tweak, change, massage on some of the old ones. Our council committee assignments, our citizen advisory committees, you know, they help us out. They help us accomplish those things. These, however, take a lot of time, month to month, some more than others. This unfortunately is time that you all could easily spend, most likely with your family, or doing your real jobs. But instead, you're giving back to your community, and for that, you all deserve a huge thank you. As council president, one of the duties is to appoint a chair and vice chair to borough committees, as well as a liaison and co liaison to our boards. This process is harder than you think. During the process, though, our number one goal is to provide a balanced and well-rounded experience for all council members, while also maximizing our own personal experiences to help facilitate the right decisions and drive great results for the borough residents. That being said, here are the following appointments for 2023. Uh, Borough Council Committees. Administration Chair Lisa McKnight, Vice Chair Pete DeSarno. Capital Review Chair Nadine Jeffroy, Vice Chair Alex Kogan, with Alan Morgan. Communications Chair Diane Belisca, Vice Chair Matt Kaminsky, Alex Kogan. Community Activities Chair Pete DeSarno, Vice Chair Nadine Jeffroy. Engineering and Construction Chair Alex Kogan, Vice Chair Matt Kaminsky. Finance Chair Lisa McKnight, Vice Chair Diane Belisca. Legal and Regulatory Chair Diane Belisca, Vice Chair Pete DeSarno. Personnel Chair Matt Kaminsky, Vice Chair Nadine Jeffroy. Public Works Waste Water Treatment Chair Alex Kogan, Vice Chair Diane Belisca. Shared Services Chair Matt Kaminsky, Vice Chair Nadine Jeffroy. Our Citizens Advisory Committees, our liaisons. Uh, for our beautification advisory committee liaison would be Lisa McKnight, co liaison Matt Kaminsky. Diversity Advisory Liaison Nadine Jeffroy, co liaison Alex Kogan. Mental Health Liaison Nadine Jeffroy, co liaison Lisa McKnight. Sustainability Liaison Diane Belisca, co liaison Pete DeSarno. Public Art Liaison Alex Kogan, co liaison Lisa McKnight. Our municipal affiliation liaisons for Board of Ed. Liaison Pete DeSarno, co liaison Lisa McKnight. Board of Health Liaison Nadine Jeffroy, co liaison Diane Belisca. Community Pool Liaison Pete DeSarno, co liaison Alex Kogan. Historical Society Liaison Diane Belisca, co liaison Pete DeSarno. And the last thing I have open is our Shared Dispatch Executive Board. Is that me as well?
That's me.
No, that's Al.
Because it was on the agenda.
That's all right. I need, uh, nominations for, um, Dispatch Manager Board.
Is that next? Well, we have the planning board also. Um, so I would like to nominate...
That's right. Okay. You're the one.
Okay.
Okay, nominations for planning board.
Um, I would like to nominate Matt Kaminsky as the Class Three Member to the Planning Board.
Hold the second up.
Okay, hold favor.
All right.
Aye.
So be it. Nominations for Shared Dispatch.
I'm on a roll.
Yeah.
I'd like to nominate, uh, Mayor Morgan as a council member to the Shared Dispatch Management Board.
Hold favor.
All right.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we have hearing of citizens. Anyone wish to address council? Seeing no one, I declare a public hearing closed. And I'd just like to say, Happy New Year. Thanks for staying. Um, I think twenty, two thousand twenty-three is gonna be a good year. I really do, and I just want to thank everybody for doing what they do in our town. It is one of the best towns in the state. So thank you so much. So can I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Hold favor?
Aye.
No, so be it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.